It's like, great, tell me when to come.
And Sarah was ready. Yeah, that's, that's unusual for her.
Awesome. You've done your job.
We'll email again today. Happy to come. Let me know.
That's all you can do. No, but she should answer things.
All right. Like the call to order, the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Voting Meeting today, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for public for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Roll call, please.
Dr. Beatty?
Here.
Ms. Allison Cassell Dunn?
Here.
Dr. Coleman? Dr. Pixley?
Here.
Ms. Proust?
Here.
Dr. Schoolman? Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Ms. Vardeman? Ms. Voorhees?
Here.
Will stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have five communications up until this time, August fourteenth, from our last meeting. Adopting evidence-based strategies to improve school culture, a statement of termination, Board of Health Liaison, school start time, and the impact of redevelopment surge on the public schools. We are now going to move to the approval of minutes for the Hybrid Workshop Voting Meeting and Executive Session, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. I move to approve these minutes.
Second. Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Proust?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
I'm going to move on to our superintendent's report.
Good evening.
Nope.
Doesn't sound like you're on. Hello. Hello? Oh, there we go. Good evening, everyone. I don't have a formal report tonight, but I do want to say that I was going to be originally presenting the final version of the strategic plan for adoption tonight. However, we had some discussions to include language around equity because that didn't become a huge focus out of the work that we did in strategic planning, but it is something collectively we agree as a district to continue moving on. So a lot of the action items in our plan do revolve around equity, so we want to update some of the language to reflect that continued work. So I'm working with the team on doing that now, so we're just delaying our adoption and final presentation for next month. So I apologize for the delay, but want to make sure we get it right because we have some really great action items on there, and I want to make sure the language reflects our beliefs for what we want for our students. So I will circle back to that next month. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we're going to move to our first public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policy Number Zero One Six Seven establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. We will take anybody in person for public comment first.
Hello.
Hi there. If you could state your name in the microphone and your address of where you live and sign the sign-in sheet, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Here in Crowley, two one eight Harrison Avenue. Get the rest done in a minute. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Board and Superintendent. So myself and some other Highland Park residents submitted a letter to the Board and the Superintendent last week. Our intent was to flag some concerns around redevelopment in the town. Specifically, the concerns are how that redevelopment could impact school budgets. The backdrop is that there are up to six redevelopment projects ongoing or at various stages of progress in the borough right now. So this is far more than we've ever seen, and I realize that a lot of that strategy is outside of the remit of this board, so I'll acknowledge that. However, the potential for a knock-on effect on school budgets is very real, very known in the state, and so we wanted to voice our concerns. I will not read the whole letter, but I just want to state three points that we're flagging. So the Borough has offered redevelopers pilot agreements on their past two projects, so we are likely to see more pilot agreements. These are payments in lieu of taxes, so an incentive for developers basically to skip property taxes for up to thirty years and instead make payments directly to the Borough. The impact of these pilots is that instead of a tax split between the Borough and the schools, a smaller sum is paid a hundred percent to the Borough, and the school doesn't get any of that money. Sorry for the feedback there. Now, the Borough can choose to redirect some of this money to the schools, but that's entirely optional. And I think history says that it's only going to happen if there's consistent lobbying and pressure from the community and from the school board. So thank you for your response, Dr. Suska. I'm happy to know you regularly meet with the mayor. And I see from the mayor's side as well, there's social media showing that meetings happened, but we don't get to hear about the content of those meetings. So I understand there's a need for confidentiality, but I would like to argue that the the financial impact of redevelopment on schools maybe isn't one of those cases that needs to stay confidential, and the public need to have awareness of what's happening, what's being negotiated. So my ask and the ask of the cosigners of the letter is that redevelopment is on every agenda of yours with the mayor, and you specifically ask, are pilot agreements going to be on the table, and if so, what are the details? And then the ask to the Board is to consistently ask for updates from these meetings. This is need-to-know information for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'll finish the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many people do we have online? Anybody for a public comment online? Okay, we're going to move ahead to our committee reports and recommendations. Curriculum instruction did not meet this month. We will meet again in September. So we do have some items on the agenda up for approval. They are field trip requests. As per attached, they include a field trip for our glow students to be able to walk around, walk around the town to for instructional lessons and work. And then we also have a trip to the teen center, Zone Six, for teen pep student leaders to meet with Ashton. We also have the approval for textbooks for AP Environmental Science. This is a course we approved last year, and we are able to run it, so we need textbooks. So those two textbooks were vetted and are up for approval. We also have the approval of Schedule B interscholastic athletic schedules attached. This is for all of our fall and winter season sports for middle and high school. We have the approval for university graduates, teaching interns, and practicum students for the School of Social Work from Rutgers and Capella University. They'll be in the teen center. And that concludes my items. We will move on to Equity and Excellence.
We have not met since our last board meeting. We'll be meeting this week.
And Finance and Facilities.
We did meet this month. We met last week. One minute, let me just get organized here. And we, and right here, okay. Of course, Dr. Suska and Mr. Rosa were there, John Flanagan and Colin McIntosh, as well as Nicole and myself. And on the agenda, as always, is the before and after care update. Colin updated us that license applications were submitted for the facilities of Irving and Bartle. The facilities have been approved, and we have the licenses. Now, fingerprinting of staff is the next step. There's a particular process that the state requires. And then in September, Colin will start the subsidy process. He's going to do it by grade level, invite parents in to come in to get help with the app, with the process of applying for state subsidies. So that's all very exciting news, and then we've talked about every single month for quite a while, a lot of pros and cons, but Colin is moving on it with Dr. Suska's support. And registration is already opened, has been open for before and after care. On the first day, there were a hundred and thirty applications came in, so things were moving quite well at that point. John gave us a very, very detailed review of summer facilities projects, and you all have a link to the list of projects. And on that spreadsheet, there is in green is what's done, or in the process of being done, the yellow are the ones that we're still waiting for certain things on. A lot of work has been done this summer already. The motivation is John is on top of all the details, and Denise keeps them up, keeps them moving, and they're trying to spend the R E S R funds. A lot of these repairs are being done through grant funds that need to be spent by the end of September, so he's pushing really hard to get these things done. Some of the projects are HVAC at Bartle, flooring at the high school in Irving, updates to security cameras. And what he shared with us is that you do one project, just like in your house, it leads to something else. So they were very happy to get the slate roof at the high school repairs done, only to figure out that it was gutters that were also causing leaks, and now there's, I think there's a change, we're going to be seeing change orders for increased work on those roofs to still try to get to all those leaks. That was true of the flooring, too. He described how, you know, once they get to a flooring, they realize they need another layer of something or other, and think we have some change orders on that as well. So it is moving along. The other project we talked about was Irving Playground. That will more likely be completed in September. A lot of these, a lot of projects, the issues are materials on order, but what he was talking about was having the ground prepared over at Irving, so before school starts, so that once the equipment arrives, it can go in very quickly. So he's, he's on it, and things are moving along well. Agenda items, we're still, we're still waiting at that point. We're waiting for information on the Bartle Walkway. High school renovation, the high school baseball field renovation, however, is now moving forward. Funds were delivered to the district from the HP Boosters, and I think on our agenda, you're going to see engineering, proposals for engineering and architecture, or we'll see proposals for engineering or architecture going out. Those are the things that were discussed. We have two new policies. Emergency and crisis situations and firearms or weapons. These we discussed, however, they're not on the agenda this month, so we have, everybody should take time to read them. And when you hear about policy, we have a lot of new policies that have come through Strauss Esme. Not on the agenda next month, gives you time to do some reading and ask your questions. Okay, going to the actual agenda items that are in our, that we're voting on tonight. We're approving, we are moving to approve the bill list for July twenty-third to August nineteenth. Final treasurer, final report of the treasurer of school monies for May thirty-first and June thirtieth. We'll be voting on the board secretary's report, certifying that no budgetary line has been overextended, as well as we're certifying that that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the year. On our agenda is also the approval of budget transfers, travel and related expenses. A reimbursement report is on here. We have lists, lots of lists of different contractors. So number eight is Contractors for Professional Development and Related Services. And rather than read through them all, you know, please look through them, and if you have questions, ask as soon as I'm done here. Now, some of these are already contracted to start. Others are, for example, Dr. L. Haynes and Associates is one, where we're contracting so that should we need these types of evaluations, it will already have, it will have been board-approved, and therefore special services can go out and request those evaluations if we need additional to what our in-house related services people can do. So that's quite a long list on that one. Number nine is Contractors for Professional Development. And you can read through those. Inspired Instruction is quite, is a number of them, and Go Guardian. Janalee Consulting is going to be working. That's a high school, middle school? I forgot.
District-wide.
District-wide for full-day sessions and walk, planning sessions and walkthroughs. Number ten is what we all love so much, is the approval of non-public allocations. Remember that we are required to, our district is required to pass through funds to non-public schools. This is not our money, but the state in its wisdom requires these funds to go through districts. So number ten is the approval of that process, and Children's House Montessori School, Rinas Bas Yarko, and Yeshiva Shari Seon, the Girls Division, have all requests for nursing, security, technology, and textbook allocations that is on our agenda. We are looking to, district is looking to continue the contract for RBT, which is Registered Behavioral Technician Services. We found that should have been effective this past year, so we'll be able to keep open that option to continue that support. Then we have a long list of salaries. Now, these are salaries, nobody's, it's not that they're new here, it's that they're being funded, some percentage of their salaries being funded by federal and state grants. So given that we're under new contracts for many of our teachers anyway, and other reasons, these are being allocated. We needed to list these this way, then they're allocated towards state and federal grants. Okay, that's all of twelve. Thirteen is, thirteen and actually fourteen is the the submission of the baseball field renovation project. It goes to our architects and to number fourteen is engineering, to give us reports we need to start the work on the renovations to the baseball field. Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, again, are those non-public school pass-through funds. Fifteen is security, and that school is, it's a Jewish day school, is requesting a security guard, an armed security guard. Sixteen is the same. Seventeen is technology purchases for for one of the schools. Oh, yeah, also the Yeshiva Shari Seon. Eighteen, we have, what?
Number seventeen.
Oh, there was a rethrough.
Sorry.
No, no, thank you for reminding me. Those are additions, right? So we have, on number seventeen, we have two additional vendors. So in the agenda, we have a Girl Hill, Mystery Science, Happy Numbers, Lexia Voyager, we're adding Singapore Math and Sourcewell, also under the non-public technology. Twenty-four, too. That we have a parental tuition contract. I believe that's a staff member that wants their child to attend our school, so they pay tuition. Number nineteen is a student, a non-resident student who would like to attend Highland Park High School, and that we would be, then they would be paying us tuition. That student has been, has met with our high school principal and gone through a process to be accepted. We have some revised tuition contracts. Again, this is money coming into us. These are students who will be attending our autism program at Bartle, and the tuition has been revised based on state figures. We have some added district, oh, some added district placements. Again, these are, I don't believe, these are not new placements, they're they're continuing, they're continuing added district placements for three students. And number twenty-three is, we will be needing to contract for substitute nurse services this year, so that's, ESS is the organization that does our substitute, our teaching substitute, so they're also, they also have a contract for nursing, substitute nurse placement. And twenty-three is one of the change orders that I talked about. This is for the flooring at the high school. And then we're adding in number twenty-four, which is approval of a change order for a roofing project at Irving. That is, I'm just going to read it. I move the Board of Education, accept the recommendation of the superintendent, to approve change order oh oh four to modify existing coping stones for new metal coping in the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Less an allowance for a total change order of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And that is all there is for finance and facilities. Do you have questions? Denise will answer them.
I have what I think is a small question. What's the pavilion that's going up at Irving with the playground?
The pavilion is through the HPE Foundation money from Ida Kushner, and that's if there are leftover funds from the greenhouse. That's how the grant was written.
Okay, so that'll be in that back section, the pre-K playground would potentially have.
Funds left over from the greenhouse, then a pavilion section would be included. I don't know where it's going to be, to be honest with you.
Okay. And I also just wanted to thank the boosters and all of you for your work to get the baseball field renovations underway. That's very, very exciting for a baseball family.
Other questions or comments? Okay, back to you.
All right, Personnel and Communications.
Personnel Committee did meet on August sixth. In attendance were Dr. Suska, Marilyn, Nikki, Anne, and myself. We discussed the personnel agenda items that I'll be reading in a little bit, and then also under Communications, we discussed just in general, the district website and some updates. Specifically, somebody had mentioned a few things on the middle school website that were out of date, so our amazing technology team is going to be looking into different links and testing. Thank you very much. So we're very excited about that. In addition to the calendar, some discussion about how to make it more accessible to parents, potentially adding some district things to the school calendars or some school events to the district calendar, and just trying to figure out the best way to do that. And on to the agenda. We have an approval of leave, of a leave of absence, approval of two different appointments, including the director of the before and after-school program, approval of a resignation, three resignations, approval of reappointments for HBEA employees at the middle school, approval of some transfers between schools, approval of movement on the guide, approval of classroom and office moves, approval of change of staff for summer ESL screening, approval of staff for incoming ninth-grade orientation, which will be on August twenty-seventh, approval of compensation of staff to attend mentoring training, approval of professional development presentation hours, approval of extra compensation for our paraprofessionals, approval of toileting stipend for a list of paraprofessionals, approval of extra hours to write and grade summer pre-calc assessments, approval of stipends for teacher leaders, approval of additional instructional assignments. Approval of, oh, and number sixteen, there is one read-in that isn't on the agenda. That's for an extra period, LLDERI, seven, eight life skills for Tanya Gerlock. We have to run multiple life skills classes because some of the students get adaptive PE, and that means everyone can't get life skills in the same period. Dates are nine-five to six-nineteen at the middle school. Number seventeen, approval of extra hours for secretaries at Bartle, approval of after-school program staff. Number nineteen, approval of extra duty positions for athletics. Number, and number twenty, approval of revised rate for the twenty-twenty-four summer teaching reinforcement. That's the STAR Extended School Year Program. And that is it. And questions for Personnel and Communications?
All right.
There's no need for questions?
Can we hold just a second? I'm just, I had my notes, and sorry. I'm let's see, that was on that was on page six. Okay, yes, that's in the Inspired Instruction for the NJSLA Advanced PD. Which subject or subjects will that cover? One of my questions. And then I guess looking into the nature of this kind of professional development being provided by Inspired Instruction, their goal is to, as it says here, have test prep integrated into daily instruction. Specifically, having teachers even design questions that are similarly worded and phrased or structured to test items. So I know I had raised, you know, questions about the extent to which we are going to be focusing, or how we would be focusing on preparing students to do better on the standardized test, and I see this as one of the ways to do that through PD. I guess my concern or question is, again, about the way in which this sounds like it's going to cover the entire school year, that the test prep model that we're going to be using here with the support of Inspired Instruction. So again, what subjects are we talking about, and is the expectation that on a daily basis, teachers are going to be expected to incorporate these test prep strategies starting from day one, as Inspired Instruction does kind of promote on their website?
Great question. So this is for math, and part of what I know that we've talked about in the past, I believe curriculum and instruction has brought it up, is that we don't have math programs specifically to support our curriculum, so we use a variety of integrated tools, including math manipulatives and a lot of different strategies to support math instruction, but we don't pay or subscribe to a particular program, like in Visions or insert math program, I'd say, yeah, go math, you know, yeah, there's plenty of them out there. They're very expensive. So what we do is try to provide teachers with opportunities to write questions, create their own activities, things like that. So they've done a lot through Conquer Math, through the training, and we're continuing that work through complex tasks. So they write, you know, they get training, then they write their own, and we implement that. One of the areas that we have found since doing all of this work that was still in need of support was assessment-type of questions that were of multi-level, because what we find is students are traditionally being asked more lower-level questions, like during their do-now activities or on their assessments, and they're not really hitting those extended constructed response questions that are higher-level thinking. Those happen to also be the types of problem-solving that we see on more robust questions asked by state assessments. So it's sort of twofold. So our teachers don't have resources to get assessments, so those, those programs come with a package. And part of that is our assessment questions. We don't have that. So our teachers are learning how to write varying assessment questions at different levels of blooms, more specifically, levels five and six, which are our higher ones, short-constructed and extended-constructed responses, to offer them at varying times throughout instruction. So sometimes they'll be used as do-now questions just to get the thought process going. Sometimes they're formative assessments, once or twice a week, again, just to check for understanding, or sometimes they're used as summative assessments to evaluate at the end of a unit. So they're not, it's not all the time, but they're being used throughout the course of the unit in varying different areas that happen to be higher, higher level.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Personnel and Communications? Okay, I'll be presenting a reporting on policy. So policy met last week, who is myself, Dr. Suska, Jen, Monique. And we had quite a lot of things to discuss, so I'm going to give you an overview of a few of the more, I guess, more interesting topics, because the policies that we're actually pushing forward are not that interesting at all. Anyway, so we started to talk about a process that would be used to reexamine the student use of privately-owned technology. That is our policy, but we are considering potentially looking at revising the policy. potentially looking at revising the policy around cell phones, not around personal laptops or things of that nature that are used for instruction, uh but really about access to cell phones. Um, we established a rough timeline to start policy review. Um, so we've been assembling research, um looking to see what other districts have been doing, um, you know, kind of gathering all of those materials. In fact, today there was another announcement about a, a district um postponing their pilot. Um, so every day there is more and more coming in about what different districts are doing um to address the issue of, of cell phones in school. So we are assembling all of that. Um, so from now until November, that is um going to be kind of shared with everyone and you know, just take a gander, review it, and send any questions or um concerns or, you know, interesting points to um Policy Committee for us to discuss. Um, then in October, we'll have our first central leadership team meeting. Uh, we would like to draft a stakeholder survey so we can um garner uh, I guess, get an assessment of attitudes in the um community, attitudes in the school, staff, students around uh different types of policy changes that could be made. Um, in addition to just kind of assessing the impact of phones in school as well. Um, in November, Dr. Suska will be um, up until November, she's been working hard on this already, but she's been gathering discipline and HIB data related to cell phones, because um that is a very much a, a source of um a lot of discipline reports and um the, you know, use of social media and the use of these cell phones for recording students without permission and things of that nature do make their way into our HIBs as well. So we want to have a better picture of how um, to what extent our cell phones and um social media impacting our discipline and HIB reports. And um in December, once we have all of that information, we will start discussion of the data and possible revisions. Um, I know that this might not seem like fast enough for, you know, those of us that have been, you know, hoping for a change. Um, but like I said, we are now learning of districts that were going to roll out changes, they decided this summer and are now pulling back. So Montclair is pulling back on their pilot. Um, for yonder pouches, they've decided to postpone that a few months. Um, it's the, you know, use the um, Los Angeles has decided to slowly roll out their pilot. Um, and then there are some districts as well that we're looking at locally. Um, Cherry Hill uh was one of them that we're kind of following. Um, their board has actually been wonderful to communicate with in terms of their process um and in sharing things with us. So um, we're going to kind of keep in touch with them and uh keep an eye on things locally. Um, just kind of keep moving forward so that we can start having those discussions later this year. Bless you. Um, and the other policy we discussed is public comment during board meetings. The reason we are discussing that is because we are abolishing our remote public board meetings during a declared emergency policy. That's no longer needed. Um, so we are actually going to integrate the um idea of remote participation during um emergencies into our regular policy as just remote participation. So we were discussing um language that we would want to add um in terms of how to structure public comment during the webinar, um adding language and parameters for emailing comments, if that's still something that the board wants to pursue. I don't believe that a lot of districts have that policy in place, so that's something that we're going to kind of look at. Um, and we'll reach out for, to our um law firm as well for language suggestions. We started talking, a very preliminary discussions about chronic absenteeism and its links to student achievement. Um, these discussions about our attendance policy, um is something that as a whole, the district is exploring. Um, our current policy is more lenient than the state policies uh that change was made in twenty nineteen, which also correlated with COVID and the um impact on chronic absenteeism after that. So we can't say there's causation about the, you know, rise in rates, but we do want to examine um the impact of having a more lenient policy, um I guess, on community attitudes towards um absenteeism and really kind of center our discussion around, well, you know, if it's excused, if it's unexcused, the real damage here is that if a student is not in school, they're not learning. So how do we um kind of work on, you know, action plans or goals that um the district can, you know, put into place to really encourage attendance and to really tackle this um from a student's support standpoint? So there was some discussion about possibly revising the policy, but um the committee would like to see more parsed out data than what's currently available. Um, so stay tuned. And then the two policies that we are moving forward. No, it's not. Second reading. Oh, okay. Um, we have the organizational chart for second reading. Um, oh, yeah, so that's the only one. Okay. Never mind, those other two will be for next month. Um, and then we do have a lot of policies that all of the committees will be looking at over the course of the next month as well. Any questions for policy?
Thank you for doing that. Policy needs to be fine, but I didn't make it to that meeting. Well, I'll stick on that. And I, and I'm glad that um that cellphone is going to central leadership teams. I think it's, of all the different policies we work on, that one has to have total teacher administrator buy-in. And the, it's the, I think it needs to come, I mean, we need to hear parent feedback, as we talked about, but we really need to hear administration and teachers and what they think they can enforce. So that's one.
All right, um, we're going to move on to the public comment. This is our second public comment of the evening. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policy number zero, one, six, seven establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Is there anybody in person that would like to comment? Angela, how many people do we have online? Is there anybody for public comments online? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move towards board action items. For curriculum and instruction, I would like to move items one through four.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prouse?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes. Financing facilities.
Um, I move items one through uh one through now, with the addition of twenty-four and the addition on number seventeen. So one through twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prouse?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes. Hey, Personnel and Communication?
I'd like to move items one through twenty.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prouse?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Am I moving this one?
Sure.
For policy, I'd like to move number one.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prouse?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes. All right, um, and we'll move on to board liaison reports. Does anybody have a report that for the board and the community?
Summertime.
Yeah, summertime, summertime. Okay. All right, um, I do not have a president's report. Are there any, is there any old business? All right, known old business. I do have new business. Um, I sent out a draft of our board goals. Um, this is the first draft um that uh we are taking feedback on and going to discuss and hopefully on have on the agenda for approval in September. Um, two goals, one planning, uh, one framed around planning and student achievement and one planned, um, sorry, and one around communications and community relations. Um, those were the areas where our board self-assessment ranked the lowest. So these are the areas which we really want to try to improve. Um, for planning and student achievement, our focus would be um really on progress monitoring, um receiving those regular updates from district leadership, um analyzing collected data to assess effectiveness of our, what we're doing currently, um engaging in discussions to determine necessary adjustments based on progress monitoring results and approving and supporting recommend, recommended changes to act, the action plans that are needed to better achieve district goals. Um, so the way we frame this is, um, we kind of gave examples about what progress would look like in each of these areas. So for example, um, progress would be reviewing policies like attendance or like our student um use of privately owned technology and making the necessary revisions based on current research and data to promote um positive academic, social, and emotional outcomes. It could be supporting reviews and audits of programs and practices to ensure efficacy, um which is something that we're currently pursuing with um our RISE program. Um, it's approving recommended curricula, programs, and professional development that promotes equitable access to engaging and challenging curricula, safe and inclusive and identity-affirming environments, student and staff wellness, and reduces disparities um in academic and discipline data. Um, it's coordinating with local government to advocate for district needs and pre-k expansion, facility upgrades, transportation, and safe routes to school, and any anticipated impacts from upcoming development projects. It's increasing our attendance um and our practices and webinars and trainings offered through the NJSBA. Um, they have actually kind of gotten pretty interesting. So there are some really decent webinars offered uh very frequently. Um, so just trying to make sure that we have members attending um those regularly so we can apply that knowledge to um our planning goal and um continuing our, our participation in the central leadership team and also the labor collaborative. And then for communications and community relations, um, we want to strengthen communication efforts to ensure regular two-way internal and external communication between the board, community, and the district. Um, so we will continue to at proactively communicate through public meetings, email, social media, and school-based communications, encourage feedback mechanisms such as surveys, focus groups, advisory groups that allow families to provide input on district policies and programs, research and implement strategies to increase communication and engagement with historically underrepresented groups, improve internal communication through sharing detailed and timely committee reports, and encouraging, uh encourage inquiry and discussion and of action items prior to board vote. So for this, our progress indicators could be increasing our attendance at school and district-based events, increasing family participation in school and district surveys, events, focus groups, and advisory groups, especially from historically underrepresented groups, increasing opportunities for discussion and community input on the action items prior to board vote, increasing communication about and the celebration of district, school, staff, and student accomplishments, and in turn, continued communication about district challenges, the efforts to address them and progress in those areas, and continuing meetings with the mayor's office to exchange information regarding district and local needs. So at this point, if there's any um anything anybody wants to discuss, the floor is yours.
I just want to thank you for doing all the work, Allison, on this. There's, there's been a lot of work. This is way more detailed than the last couple of years when Mark and I did this. So I do, I do really appreciate it. It's also holding us more accountable, because there's more uh kind of need in this for us. So I, I thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same. Thank you. And I know you invited um input, of course, from board members, and we have been doing some collaboration within the document, but yeah, very, I think it's important to be as explicit and thorough as we possibly can be uh because we want to maintain kind of our focus and lens on these areas in which we should be always developing ourselves. So I do appreciate the time and effort put into this. Um, I have in one of the comments here, and this is just something I know we've been discussing uh in terms of uh ensuring that we are covering sort of all the priority areas that we have identified. And sometimes the language or the terms used for certain areas of um, whether we're talking about despair, addressing disparities or promoting um student wellness and support, sometimes there's overlapping um terms. But um, one thing I did notice we didn't include was culturally responsive um practices. Um, and I know that we, we do talk about safe, inclusive, and identity-affirming environments. So identity-affirming certainly would be one of those overlapping terms with culturally responsive. But again, I think just specificity is important, especially with these, in these areas, and given the diversity in our district.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm just giving it now, but there's a great, uh, Allison left a great document. So and we're, Monique, that's where Monique's comments are on our drive. So um definitely, definitely, definitely a good place to share thoughts.
I had to send it out as a PDF because we can't have more than four people on the document. But any of the um, yeah, can't have that many, more than four, yeah, because if, if you, if your core, it's a quorum. Um, so we've been taking a feedback and then, you know, making comments and adjustments. And then um, like, we can always just share it with you. Just, we can't all edit it, because it becomes a discussion.
Can we view it like a live document, like just to view?
Yeah, you can, if you Google it, if you Google it. If you look for board twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, you'll find it. Anything else? All right, so we will continue to take feedback on those, um, and we will make adjustments and they will be up for the community to view, um, and then up for board vote um next month. Any other new business?
Well, uh, yeah, I did want to raise this. It's not in new anymore. It's, it's still new, but uh in, in April, um, many of you may have already heard that the um DOJ uh established a new set of rules around accessibility of web applications um and mobile um apps provided by state and local uh governments, including public schools. Um, and it's essentially a um upgrade to, or update, I should say, to title two of the Americans with Disabilities Act. So it's been in conversation in a lot of the circles that I'm in professionally, and I just wanted to raise it here, because I know this has been an area that we have been trying to work on uh for many years now, just getting it right. And it's not easy to get this right, but um there is now new regulations and ADA around this. So I do want to ensure that perhaps in policy, we're taking a deep dive look at the new regulations, um, and then thinking about how we can ensure that we are compliant. Not that we aren't already, you know, working on that and trying to be, be compliant with um digital accessibility, but I know we have had some areas where we found that we were lacking. So I think now is the time to really, especially with this new regulation, to really um do what we can do to ensure that, oh, I mean, we have to, all of our digital and mobile materials are accessible. And that's it. So I'll share that with policy. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.